The June 20th, 2019 Vernon Hills Village Board Meeting to Order. Roll call, please.
Here.
Here.
Trustee Markward.
Here.
Trustee Cook.
Here.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Here.
Trustee Takaoka.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Mr. Clerk, at this time, I would like to nominate Trustee Cook to be President Pro Tem until such time as the Village President arrives, or for the duration of the meeting, whichever is shorter.
I will second it.
Motion and second. Roll call, please.
Aye. Trustee Schultz.
Aye.
Trustee Markward.
Aye.
Trustee Cook.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Congratulations once again.
So, we now have the meeting up and running. Would everyone please stand for the pledge?
In the presence, I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first thing is generally citizens wishing to address the board. Is there anyone that wishes to address the board on something not related to yesterday's water incident? Because we're going to have a discussion about that shortly. Okay? In that case, then I will defer to Public Works Director, Dave Brown.
Thank you. So, as you are aware, there was some repair work and planned repair work for the water system. We've invited Rodney Warden, Lake County Public Works Director, to join us. He has a few additional details that he will share with us. I just want to back up a little bit in terms of how things went and some of the communication. I think in terms of the Village and Lake County, I think some of the upfront discussions went very well. I think they communicated very well with myself and my office in terms of the planning for it. As you know, Lake Michigan water is brought to us by Central Lake County Joint Action Water Agency, so they're the ones that supply us with Lake Michigan water. Then that is transferred to Lake County Public Works, who provides water through their water mains, and then services by private individuals to the homes and businesses. So, in terms of the plan, I think Clickjawa did a really good job coordinating the shutdown in terms of what was going to happen, getting the contractor out there, mobilizing, putting a schedule together. As we know, some things didn't go as well. I think in terms of the communication efforts and the planning, I think they did a good job, and I applaud them on that. I also want to point out, in terms of while the water pressure was dropping, while the boil order was in order, I just want to compliment everyone who put their energy in to try to communicate with the residents. Very difficult situation. I think a lot of the communication efforts were more difficult due to some of the technology and some of the database and information. I think that's where Rod may touch base on a little bit more. But there were a lot of calls going to the right people and having conversations. But as calls are going into switchboards, I was over at Lake County Public Works Office watching their staff, and there's a number of people all fielding calls, but there's so many calls coming in, that was very difficult. I know Village Hall staff, dispatch, and Chris Hansen from my office were fielding, you know, thousands of calls. And so, I just want to thank them for their effort. But I guess, more importantly, I wanted Rod to provide a little bit more detail for us. And Rod, if you could help us.
So, good evening. As mentioned, I'm Rodney Warden, the Public Works Director for Lake County Public Works. So, let me lead by saying that I apologize for especially the communications part of the boil order incident. We have learned a lot of lessons from this, and are already changing many aspects of the way we handle these kinds of situations. As mentioned, Clickjawa did a planned water repair project on Tuesday. And so, at eight o'clock Tuesday, they suspended service for us, and we were operating the system based on the stored water. So, to do that, we were bringing the reservoirs down. We have mostly ground reservoirs and two elevated water towers that maintain the pressure in the system. We were drawing down the reservoirs one at a time, and then basically running the system in manual. When we were switching from one reservoir to another, the valve that interconnects the two towers to keep the water balanced, one of the valves failed to operate properly. And so, for about 35 to 45 minutes, the two towers didn't function together in concert, and we had a major water pressure failure in the system. When that happened, it's just hydrology. The highest points in the system are the ones who felt the loss of pressure, and in some cases, actual loss of water service for a brief period of time. So, that was the root cause of what occurred. That occurred between five and six o'clock on Tuesday evening. So, then, once we did that, we set about the task of identifying who was in the affected area that would be subject to the boil order. Normally, when you have a water incident, it's a water line break, and it's very black and white, who was affected. But in this case, where there was a pressurized system, we really are reliant on the trouble calls that we get from the field. This is where is the outage, who is getting the low pressure. And so, based on that, we made our initial assessment of who was affected to the degree that they needed to take precautions. That was a fairly modest list on Tuesday night. And then, I'll complete that thread of thought, and I'll come back to communication issues back. By Wednesday morning, the calls that we were getting, we identified that we needed to expand the area. And that's what came to the final number of about 1,300 people. About 1,000 in Vernon Hills, and then another 300 down in the Metawa area. So, getting back to our communications, our primary tool for notifications in these events has been to date is to use a reverse 911 robocall system. And it's worked great when you only need to notify 100 people of an isolated line. In this case, we had to notify a high volume of people. So, a couple of errors that we made. One, we sent out a robocall to everybody in the network, just saying, "We're aware that we have a water line pressure issue." We sent that out about 5:30, so that to try to just control the calls that we were getting coming in. And then, we were going to do another robocall once the system is stabilized and we knew what the impact was. So, in retrospect, that means I put 10,000 calls into the queue of my robocall system. Then, when I wanted to do the actual boil order notice, there was this huge backlog of calls. And we didn't identify that. We didn't recognize that was a problem until Wednesday morning. So, Wednesday morning, we recognized that the calls for the boil order had not gone out, and we re-initiated that call. So, then, the second part of our error in using the robocall system is when we populated the calls, there's a drop-down menu where you say you want to have these addresses, and that auto-populated everybody in subgroups. And so, the initial Wednesday morning call, and the initial list of properties of who's affected, captured a lot more people than was actually necessary for the boil order notice. We recognized that problem fairly quickly, and about two hours later, we're able to get the final and real number, real list posted on our website. And then, later in the day, we were able to transfer that information to a GIS map that we were able to post on our website. And people, and feedback that I've gotten is that the map is what people found to be the most effective. So, moving forward, that's in fact what we're going to do. We're going to continue to use the robocall system, and I'm going to go with the vendor. I'm reaching out to the vendor to see if I can purchase a higher data set to where I can process more calls at once. But we're also going to make our, especially for the larger events, we're going to do a web-based dissemination of the information to where it's very intuitive and easy to go in and see whether or not you're in the affected area or not. So, fortunately, the test results came back benign this morning, and we were able to lift the boil order notice this morning. And what that actually, with the samples, that we got the results back this morning, were actually taken right after the event. So, it means that the system, in fact, was never out of compliance. The boil order is simply a precautionary measure we take, because until we get those lab results back, we can't validate that that was the case. Other things that we're doing on the system to improve our responses in the future, we are implementing a new billing system this December, and we're in conversations with the vendor, because we believe that there's a feature that we can purchase that will allow text messaging. So, the robocalls and text messages are reliant on customers updating and maintaining their information on file. That'll be something that we'll need to build into our communications plan to keep customers, encourage customers to keep that up to date. On the system itself, we just, it's a coincidence, but just last month, we did get board approval and are awarding a contract for 2.4 million to replace major electrical and mechanical parts of the water system. And that'll include some additional data system to allow us to have more real-time information of how the system is performing and respond even quicker in the future. And then, also, part of our challenge in this episode was that we have a very defined amount of stored water in the Vernon Hills system. So, when Clickjawa's service is suspended, we have to go into these extraordinary circumstances. We have also set aside, in a previous budget, $6 million to build another 2 million gallon water reservoir on the Vernon Hills system. And we're currently in the consultant study phase, and they're helping us identify potential locations for where that reservoir might be located. So, in closing, I'd just like to say a special thank you to Dave Brown and the Police Department, and everybody else that I didn't have visibility of, who helped us through this system, because it really was a team effort, and I really appreciate it. And again, I apologize for the communication challenges, and we're learning, and are open to input on ways that we can make it better next time.
Just a point, some of the inquiries I got, and I'm sure Mr. Brown passed it along to you, was that the news media identified it as New Century Town.
Yeah.
And your robocalls went to Greg's Landing, and the actual area was a third area.
That's on the...
And so, that was where we ran into some of the confusion, because...
We did, and I appreciated that feedback. In my bubble of Lake County Public Works, we refer to a pretty broad region as New Century.
That's what I tried to...
And that's just the way our system was built back in the 70s, and that's what it says on all of our reference material, and that's a flaw. And we recognize that. And I believe that going to the GIS-based system, it's much more intuitive that it's Greg's Landing, or it's Metawa, or wherever it might be. And we'll definitely...
The one question I had was, Dave, when we, or Mark, when we did our own call, was that done village-wide or just areas?
That was done village-wide.
Yeah.
Because at that point, we weren't sure who got the calls, who didn't get the calls.
Right.
Some people said they received them, some said they didn't. We did a village-wide.
And would we be, would it be a helpful thing if, and it was one of the thoughts I had, and several other people mentioned the same thing, if you have the same situation, while you're doing it, if you could also notify us, because of the fact that we know our Village better, and we could do the same kind of a call and define the area. And when somebody said, "Well, why would you do it village-wide?" Well, because I might have a relative that lives in the affected area, and I'd want to call and check to make sure that they, you know, were aware of the information or whatever.
We eventually got there, and I appreciate Dave reaching out and helping me understand that that option was available to me. And we will definitely make that part of our checklist in the future.
Question I have, just so people understand, reason for the boiling water. Am I not correct? And what happens when we lose pressure? If I'm correct, David, it falls under 24 PSI's on pressure on it. Our water lines aren't watertight, and so, when the pressure drops, you may have contaminated water that comes back into the lines. And that's why the boil water incident occurs. Am I correct on that?
That's correct. I would just caveat, there's a risk that we could get contamination into the line. Normally, the system operates from 50 to 60 PSI, and so, water can infiltrate into the pipe. If there is a leak, a small leak, the water comes out of the pipe, not into the pipe. And once you get below that 20 pounds, you have that risk. So, that is the purpose of it. It's a precautionary measure. We take samples. Those samples have to be taken to a laboratory, and then they have to incubate in the laboratory for 24 hours before they can be read.
And the reason I'm asking is that I commend you for the fact that what happened in the situation, it probably wasn't, but you went on and above to make sure things were taken care of.
Well, I appreciate the compliment, but it is actually a requirement with EPA.
Yeah, well, I mean, the reality too is, the boil is for because there could be fecal matter in the water.
Correct. You could give basically diarrhea or those kinds of things.
Which can make you have diarrhea. Okay, Dr. Oppenheim.
My, so you'd mentioned, you did some kind of testing or reach out to figure out where the low-pressure areas were. The concern that I have, or the question that I have, some people stated that they felt that they had low pressure in their homes, possibly no water, but they weren't included in the boil area.
So, again, normally, these are caused by water line breaks.
Right.
And it's black and white, where we know where the affected, directly affected areas are. On this one, it was a matter of subjectivity and judgment, based on our knowledge of the hydrology of the system and calls from the field. So, again, we made our best estimate based on the input we got from the field, from the customers.
So, if that customer actually felt that their water pressure was low, then maybe they should be boiling their water, even though they weren't included on the mapped area? Is that the answer?
That's always the safest bet. Sometimes, in a system of this size, you have anomalies that aren't related to the actual incident at hand, but somebody still had a low-pressure event that's unrelated. But it's always a safe measure to not take water consumption if you experience an outage or a significantly low-water pressure event.
Okay. Thank you.
Trustee Schultz.
Couple of things. When it comes to flushing your own household system after a boil order or whatever, what are the steps that one should be taking?
So, actually, in a boil order system, if it comes back that there was no problem, then you don't need to flush anything.
All right. There's some people that are reporting that they had low pressure, not in the affected areas, and then they were running their system, and they were getting cloudy, discolored water.
Well, I never want to say that somebody didn't experience that, but in fact, the system was recharged basically in the...
Quickly.
Quickly, in the same time. The only way you get discolorization is if you have a break, and you have dirt getting into the line and that kind of a thing. In this incident, if somebody has discolorization, it's probably from another cause. I'm not saying it didn't happen, and it isn't something that you... If you do see that, you should just run your tap for five minutes.
Five minutes?
But I don't believe that it came from this port underlying incident.
But if there was a system-wide drop in pressure, just some kind of an anomaly, and you had a problem with the feed into your house, could that be a result or a cause?
It shouldn't, this event should not have caused anybody to have cloudy water.
Okay. All right. Fair enough. We looking at any bill rebates? I know that's a political decision by your bosses, I'm assuming. But there was a lot of angst, so that might not be a bad thing. With regard to the robo, John, I think you're the most familiar. We have a robo system, robocall system here that appears to be quite satisfactory. I mean, I get, I've got two lines that get calls, and the calls are issued right around the 10 o'clock AM hour on that first Tuesday of the month, and I get them within a couple of minutes. So, you may want to talk to some of our staff concerning our supplier of that, because I think we're reaching out to about 9,000 numbers, or maybe greater.
Yes, sir. In the transmittal that you're going to get this week, we did a summary of what our efforts were when Dave coordinated with Lake County Public Works, and wanted to make sure there was a unified message, and all the data's in there. And again, the data that we, or our ability to connect is only as good as people keeping their lines current.
Right.
But our success rate, I believe you'll be very satisfied with it. It hit 51% of the households that were registered.
Yeah, go ahead.
In a fairly short period of time. We've kind of prided ourselves on that system that we feel pretty good about. With regard to capturing text data, there's still a few troglodytes out there that have a landline and kind of refer a lot of information. So, you may want to capture emails also, besides just texting.
That's something I didn't mention, is about half of our customers have opted into emails, and we did use that tool in this event.
Yes, I received some of your emails, so...
And I would just offer, we're going to an all-the-above plan here.
There you go.
Where we're going to do all the tools we have.
Right, and a piece of string too, yeah. Understood.
Well, the robocalls, though, you got to get, if people are on cell phones, and they don't register with you, they're not getting a robocall.
Right. They have to register, and that's a tough issue.
And it's maybe something you got to emphasize, more so, and so do we, you know? You know, I mean, we always, we brought it up more than once, and I thought we were going to do a mailing. Did we ever do that?
No, sir. We haven't done a mailing, but we've done several postings.
Well, I'm just saying, we should probably do a mailing. I thought we were going to do that, and tell everybody in town, "Hey, if you've got a cellphone, register," you know, "with us."
We could probably do it through one of those postal...
If you don't, it's fine. You're not getting a call.
Pardon me? The post office has those, they'll deliver something to any address, and it's reasonably low-cost.
For our experience.
Well, no, this is above and beyond those experiences.
Or something that's an emergency, public safety.
Right. You give them 10,000 of them, and they'll deliver 10,000 to 10,000 different addresses. The last point is, I do want to congratulate you guys, though, on when you got to the map. That's something that needs to definitely be a number one in your toolkit going forward. That was terrific, and I guess Dave was there helping you. And thank you, Dave, for making the multiple trips over there. But that map that you guys generate, whoever was the guy who came up with that idea first, he gets donated for the rest of the month.
I was talking to a couple of people ahead of time. Right now, I have one guy who knows how to do that. And that's definitely on our list. A, giving them a bonus, but B, spread the wealth, spread the knowledge.
Yeah, that, yeah. And as I said to one of your bosses over there, a picture is worth a thousand words, and that was a great picture. Now, the only other thing is, we got to get past Channel 5 News, because I think in the 6 o'clock, you were the number three story still. I had to leave to come here, but they're still, because I think they're responding to people calling them, and, "Well, I had cloudy water," and blah, 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 so...
There's another town right now going through this too. Yeah, that I saw.
Oh, okay, maybe.
Maybe it was just... Yeah, yeah, yeah. I think it was another town.
I think the map was great, but the real problem was that you had lists going out there that had inaccurate information. So, that really confused everybody.
Yep.
And I think even just having, just having on the website where you can put in your address and saying you're affected or not affected would be equally as beneficial.
That's not a tool we have yet, but I see the value of that.
Or just having, just having one person in charge of the list who actually knows which list is correct. That, to me, is the most important thing, because we didn't even know who to talk to and what list was right.
Absolutely.
Did we call on citizens that wish to address the board?
Yeah, we did.
Okay. Well, okay. Does anybody have any other questions?
Out of trivia, do you know when the first boil order came out?
No.
170 years ago. John Snow, this is pretty important epidemiology information.
From Game of Thrones?
No, not Game of Thrones. I have no idea Game of Thrones.
Long, long ago.
This was, he discovered in England that a cholera epidemic was related to the water supply and not miasma in the air. And he traced it down to one actual pump on Broad Street in London, and that's when they first started it.
That's pretty important.
Thank you.
There you go.
Thanks for that.
See, you learned something.
I did. I'm learning a lot this week.
Well, and as a kind of a final thing, thanks to our staff, I mean, you know, everybody that Dave mentioned, and Mark, I know you guys were handling a lot of stuff in Austin.
Well, it wasn't just, it wasn't just Dave and his staff, or me or our staff. As I said, we had officers and CSOs and building inspectors out, hand-delivering notices to the restaurants and visiting each one.
Yeah.
Every store at Hawthorne Shopping Center, as well as, you know, Kim Christiansen doing the wordsmithing and coordinating everything and getting everything out. It was quite an exercise.
Yeah, great job by everybody.
Kudos to the Health Department for all their efforts.
And what's your name, please?
Rodney Warden. Rodney Warden.
Rodney Worgen. All right. If no one has any further questions for Rodney, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
And thanks for all your help.
Yep. And you and Dave know each other real well now, right? That's real good. Yeah, that's real good. Okay. Next is Village Events Update. John Petrillo.
Good evening, Mayor and Village Board. I am pleased to share information on our upcoming events for 2019. Summer is a special time for our community, and Village Events provide not only fun, but a sense of community and an opportunity to reconnect. Many of our residents have kids out of school or returning from college, and being able to spend a portion of our summer at home in Vernon Hills with friends, neighbors, and family is truly awesome. We would like to take this opportunity to thank the Village Board for supporting these events, and thank our cultural partners for their financial donations, which include the Taxman Corporation, Steinhoffels, Advanced Disposal, Jacobs &amp; Sow Orthodontics, Worth Bear Supply, Gee Walt Hamilton, Tucson Corporation, CDW, Chase Bank, and our 2019 Partners-in-Kind, Hits Pizza, Bears Fit, Rainbow Playstations, Rustoleum, and Chris Prunknell, owner of both Vernon Hills McDonald's, who contributed over $32,000 to make our event special this year. In addition, we'd like to give a shout-out to all the amazing volunteers who serve on the event committees. First up, our Arbor Theater concerts started on June 12th, and will run four more dates at the beautiful Arbor Theater. Concerts are free and open to the public. The next event is Thursday, June 27th, in which Cadillac Groove will be playing, followed by Thursday, July 11th, Rosie and the Rivets, Wednesday, July 24th, Hillbilly Rockstars, and Thursday, August 1st, Final Say. This Sunday, June 23rd, is our Veterans Fishing Derby, also known as the Jim and Helen Hire Fishing Derby, named after World War II veteran and former Vernon Hills trustee Jim Hire and his wife. This event provides an opportunity for prior service members residing at the VA to have a field trip to Vernon Hills. A barbecue, fishing, and a good time is guaranteed. Thank you to Public Works for stocking the lake. Thank you to PD for doing the barbecue, and thank you to the Village for the continued financial support of this annual event.
And if I can interrupt you just for a second. I was up there last night. I was up at Level last night with the boys. We had 37 for bingo last night. And the sign-up list is unbelievably long. I don't, the hospital is capping it based on their capacity of transport guys over here, but there's a huge, they love it. They absolutely love it. Like I said, they're jockeying for position to sign up for that. So, again, to all those people that you just mentioned, thank you for continuing this great tradition. I'll let you go forward.
Absolutely, sir. This is the one event that we don't put any corporate sponsorship on. This one is the Village of Vernon Hills. This is the one that's run by us, and it's for our veterans. And again, we appreciate the financial support to make this one great. Again, Dave and his crew, we've been posting the fish stocking throughout the year, and I'm sure there's going to be plenty of fish caught, as always. And again, PD, all the volunteers do a great job of barbecuing, and we'll see every... all the volunteers do a great job of barbecuing and we'll see every, uh, see those working it this Sunday. It's gonna be a great event. Our veterans community does appreciate this. Followed by that, July 4th Parade, believe it or not, only fifteen days away, fifteen days. Parade start, parade start time is nine AM. Those participating need to be ready to go no later than eight forty-five. For this year, we have over eighty units signed up and ready. The grand marshal for this year is, uh, former retired fire chief Jeff Steingard. Great time for all. Later in the evening, July 4th Fireworks, Century Park, start time nine thirty PM. One of the best, if not the best fireworks show in Lake County. Summer celebration begins Thursday, July 18th, and everybody's always asking about the music. Mayor, your lineup consists of The Pelvis Brothers, seven o'clock, followed by fireworks again at nine fifteen or dusk. On Friday, July 19th, we'll have Radio Heroes, followed by Melon Cougar. On Saturday, seven o'clock, we'll have The Trippin' Billys, a bar circuit tribute band. And at nine o'clock, we'll have The Bodines, whose thirty-year span of mainstream rock and top forty music, including their hit Good Things Will Follow. Sunday events include a Kid Corner, Seventh Annual Bags Tournament, our Karima Cop fundraiser, and Vernon Hills Idol. It's a version of karaoke. National Night Out, Tuesday, August 6th at Hartman Park, a great community event, again, coordinated and sponsored by the Village. Great event. Encourage everyone to come out there and be with the police department. And last, but not least, our rebranded Oktoberfest, which is now called Fall Fest 2019. This is, uh, we're going back to our roots. Uh, we used to do this in the day where we would find a cause and all the proceeds would go to that. Uh, we've done that, uh, rebranded this year and we're gonna be supporting the Midwest Veterans Closet. It's a great charity, which is kind of like one of the last stops for veterans, prior service, and their families who are at need in North Chicago. They're always looking for additional support and we're gonna be doing a lot of great, this community, as always, will be doing a lot of great things for that community. Uh, the event includes live music, great food, beer tent, children's activity, craft show. Uh, we're gonna have a group of, uh, former Rangers who so, served in Somalia called Three Rangers Whiskey. Uh, be doing some whiskey tasting. And, uh, there's gonna be a lot of music. On Saturday at twelve o'clock, uh, we're gonna have Dizzy's Edge starting, followed by, uh, a group called Five Guys Named Moe at seven thirty. And then to make it special, two-day event on Sunday, we do have a sponsor. It is Bears Fit. Uh, they're going to be doing a pre, a game day, pre-game rally to get everybody fired up. Uh, the event is going to be over by two o'clock so everybody can get home and watch the Bears beat Minnesota. As you all know, Mike Storto's up in the booth and he is a Vikings fan, so just let him know, uh, that we're thinking about him. Uh, but there's gonna be a lot of.
We gotta suspend him.
We're gonna make him work the entire event wearing a Bears jersey as well. A lot of great music on that this day as well. A to Z Entertainment will be providing high energy, uh, but it's gonna be a great event and again, all going into a cause. Uh, so all of the information on these events are on our website under quick links and events. Uh, event season is here. We're ready to celebrate. We're ready to have fun. And again, we just want to say thanks to the board for supporting these events. Thanks to our cultural partners for donating over thirty-two thousand dollars and all the committee members who make, uh, the Vernon Hills events some of the best in Lake County. Thank you.
Okay. And, and, uh, Jan, are you the one to laze on for the fireworks? I mean, you actually with the, who was it, the Mad Bomber?
Whoa, I'm sorry, Mayor, what was the question?
Do you know who does our fireworks?
It's Melrose Pyrotechnics.
Oh, is it? It's, okay, not the Mad Bomber.
No.
Okay, so, well, how much do they charge in a minute this year?
Depends on facet.
Well, on the Fourth of July.
It's about a thousand dollars a minute.
Think? I bet it's up more, more than that now. But it's just, you know?
Yeah, maybe fifteen hundred dollars a minute.
Yeah.
It's up there.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's special. But, but no, uh, big, big shells?
Correct.
What, what were the size of the ones that were?
I would have to refer to the fire department, but I think it's, uh, no bigger than six-inch shells.
I'd have to, uh, first of all, fire my shell.
Yeah, 'cause I, I know that they used to do some tens and they don't do tens.
What was the largest one?
Those are the, I believe those were tens.
Tens, yeah. Yeah, I think it's probably just six because.
Yeah.
I thought we were gonna burn the tent down there one night.
Rattle a few windows.
You know, the tent with all the beer in it and hundreds and hundreds of people?
Just burn a few.
Yeah. Because the wind's different, three hundred feet, feet in the air than it is at ground level. All right, uh, what else? Anybody else got any speaking parts? No. Okay, next is the omnibus vote agenda. Is there a, uh?
Question?
Yeah, yeah, yes. Trustee Cook.
Yeah, I'd like to have us pull E because it was not a unanimous vote at committee of the whole. And our tradition has been that we only put stuff on omnibus that was unanimous.
Yeah, okay. All right, so is there a vote?
And trustee Schultz would like to pull I, J, K, and L, but trustee Schultz is amenable to someone making a motion for a vote en masse on those, but a separate vote.
Well, let's just, yeah, let's just, all right, A through D, F, G, H, and M. Yeah, okay. So everybody got that clear? Is there a motion today?
So made. Second.
Motion is second. Okay. Roll call on the omnibus vote agenda.
President Byrne?
Aye.
Trustee Brown?
Aye.
Trustee Schultz?
Aye.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, next item is E. Is there a motion to approve item E?
So made. Second.
Motion is second.
Anyone care to read it?
Yeah, I can read. Approve, this is the approval and passage of ordinance twenty nineteen dash one zero two, an ordinance authorizing the waiver of site development permit fees for Vernon Hills High School District 128. We got a motion and a second roll call.
As a matter of information, uh, this was being done based, at the last meeting, based upon, uh, the agreement that they would, uh, provide adequate site, uh, security for the site development issues. And they have done that in the form of a bond, so they've satisfied their side of that bargain.
Okay. Roll call.
Trustee Takaoka?
Aye.
Trustee, President Byrne?
Aye.
Trustee Brown?
Aye.
Trustee Schultz?
Aye.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there a motion to approve items A, J, K, and L?
I, J, I.
You want me to?
I, J, K.
I, J, K, oh, just those three?
And L.
I, J, K, and L.
Yeah.
You said A.
H, I, K.
All right, okay.
He's up north, A.
Okay. Uh, all right, is, so, do you want me to read them all?
Uh, no, but you can get the motion and the second first and then I'll.
Okay.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion is second. Under comments or questions?
Uh, the reason is, and again, this is nothing disparaging against Ann, but she is not an employee of the Village. And in each one of these resolutions, she is being appointed to serve as a plan administrator for a pension fund, to serve as the, uh, to serve as the authorized agent for the Village's IMRF Fund, uh, to, uh, serve as the plan administrator for the Great West Retirement Services Deferred Compensation Plan, and to serve as the plan administrator for the Village's ICMA Retirement Deferred Compensation Plan. Again, nothing against Ann, but she is not an employee of the Village and it is my opinion that she, that position, whoever holds these roles should be a statutory employee of the Village.
Now, with that said, is, is that required statutory?
It is not.
So Jim, I'm just curious, because I know we've, we've had this conversation before. Why, what, what's the reasoning?
I, it's, it's my opinion that there should be a, a direct line between, uh, the finance director and the village manager as opposed to a quasi-direct line that goes through a third party. The third party being the consulting firm that we have engaged.
Which, to me, brings a lot of backup intellectual capital, a lot of expertise to the table. Um, objectivity when you are a third party. You know, it is finance, so you know, just like in banking, it's very similar, I think, that.
Again, it's a, it's a direct line of responsibility.
Right.
Uh, to act as the, uh, direct fiduciary, uh, responsible person for the Village, uh, as opposed to from a third party.
Well, if you look at it this way, if they don't do a good job and they don't, you know, maintain a high level, then they won't be here, right?
Well, they got directors and officers and fiduciary liability.
Yeah.
Which, uh, we could, you know, certainly, we have copies of those documents.
We do.
And what's the limit of liability?
Right.
Yeah, you, you can, you can sue them for malfeasance where you would not be able to recover from an employee.
Exactly.
For a mix.
It might be an advantage then.
Exactly.
Well, what, do you know what your limits, Ann, on those coverages?
I know.
We looked into that though and they were significant.
Yeah, okay. I, I mean, I don't have a problem her representing us, so. Anybody else want to comment on that one?
No, do not have a problem.
Okay. So there's a motion. Do we have a second?
Yes.
Okay, roll call.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka?
Aye.
Trustee, President Byrne?
Aye.
Trustee Brown?
Aye.
Trustee Schultz?
No.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, uh, what's next? Next is.
Fix the Foid.
Moving past the resolutions.
Uh, on approval and passage of resolution, am I jumping ahead of myself here?
No, you're right.
Twenty nineteen dash zero two, a resolution encouraging legislative support for SB one nine six six, public defender bail bond fixed the Foid legislation. Is there a motion to approve?
I will make that motion. I, I, I was the one that brought this up as part of my bully pulpit, uh, the, uh, several meetings ago. Uh, staff, uh, went forward and actually John, I think, did most of the, the legwork on this, um, along with the village manager in developing, uh, this, uh, resolution, uh, to support, uh, Senate Bill nineteen sixty-six, which, uh, puts more teeth, uh, and enforcement capability out there to, uh, recover weapons from folks that should not have them, uh, with regard to, uh, having a, a stronger requirement for Foid card, uh, ownership, for lack of a better term. Um, the impetus of this was from the Aurora Workplace Shootings. Uh, the individual that, uh, was responsible, um, had a revoked Foid card and therefore he should not have had the weapons he had. But, uh, even though, uh, the state knew about it, they did not have the capabilities to enforce and, um, this will hopefully, by adding additional dollars to the coffer, um, create a situation where they'll have better enforcement capabilities.
Get us a motion and a second. Any further comments or questions? If not, roll call.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka?
Aye.
President Byrne?
Aye.
Trustee Brown?
Aye.
Trustee Schultz?
Aye.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Motion carries. What do you think of that one, chief? You like that one?
Yes, sir. I think it is a lot of, uh, common sense approach to make the Foid act even a little more effective.
Good. Okay. Next item is Village Attorney Discussion. This is a, a discussion we've had, you know, in closed session, we brought in the, the, four, four, four different law firms, uh, you know, and, uh, I am prepared, you know, I think it'll actually be this July 2nd, is that our next meeting? To actually appoint, uh, Klein, Thorpe, and, uh, Jenkins. And, and the principal attorney is Jim Ferola. Uh, in any event, uh, I'm gonna, I want to have Keith Hunt work with Jim to finalize the contract. You know, between us and Jim, lawyer on lawyer, okay?
That's fine.
And, uh, but in addition to that, I just want to say, uh, you know, Keith has been, he's, he's been with us, I, Jesus, ten years?
Fifteen.
Great, fifteen.
Time flies.
Yeah, time flies. Is, is, uh, he's special counsel and he, he was very active in, uh, you know, any and all, uh, EEOC exposures and, uh, you know, duty disability, uh, pension cases and such. But on top of that, he always, you know, worked with us on, uh, you know, any EEOC issues that came up, uh, you know, germane to our, uh, employee handbook and such. And, uh, and he also was involved whenever we had to have, well, a separation of the employee from the village. And I don't know how many it did at O's, but it was a few, you know? And, uh, you know, and then of course, we, what we went through, as the Daily Herald has said, the tumultuous, uh, year of, uh, uh, two thousand eighteen, because we had changed at the top of this organization, uh, at least the adminis, the administrators. And, uh, any number of people left from, you know, the village manager's office to the, the treasurer's office and, and various support people. And then, uh, then Joe Carey left and he was the assistant village manager. But with that said, uh, you know, I, I appreciate what Keith did for us, uh, in that, uh, you know, moment of, uh, I, I think urgency. And it was handled, uh, you know, perfectly. And he's done a, a very good job, in my opinion, uh, up to this point. But, uh, I think Keith understands full well that we're bringing in a firm that all they do is municipal work. Uh, you know, uh, Jim lives in town, but for, for, you know, all practical purposes, Keith has spent a lot of time in this town and has a lot of institutional knowledge. So what I want to do is keep Keith on, uh, as special counsel when we need him and actually draw up a contract to keep, to retain him in the, in the future going forward. And, uh, I've heard enough from you trustees that, you know, everybody has, uh, you know, I think significant amount of respect for Keith. And, uh, and he is a litigator, even though he gets his name in the paper sometimes for, you know, taking the little guy's scythe, which is okay.
Always on the side of truth and justice, Mayor.
Okay. All right. Well, with that said, I just want to thank.
And always on your side, which is the same.
Well, whatever. And, uh, but with that said, I think, uh, you know, staff has been helped. And, uh, I know that, uh, Mark Flushour, chief slash village manager, uh, you know, has been appreciative of the time and effort that Keith's put in and given him guidance and direction because, you know, being the village manager was a little different than being the chief of police. And, uh, and to this date, Mark's done a commendable job, but not without assistance from the department heads, council, and, and I'm sure some of us. So, anyway, Dr. Oppenheim.
I want to personally thank you for stepping in at our urgent times of need this past year, but also for working with me personally on some of the initiatives that we, that we worked on, including the smoking ordinance and the pet, uh, pet shop ordinances. And I really appreciate your help.
Thank you.
Trustee Brown.
I also want to thank you. Every time I needed a question asked and anything about how anything works, you were there, text me right back, call me right back. And a lot of attorneys don't do that, so I really appreciate that.
Trustee Takaoka.
Oh, no, I definitely want to echo the same, you know, the sentiment of, you know, the trustees on the board here. I mean, you've been here fifteen years. You obviously have a specialty that is obviously, you know, that the Village is always gonna need, you know, in the future. So absolutely looking forward to continue to work with you as well.
Okay. Well, I don't know, you know, if we, we're not taking a vote on anything tonight, but we will on the second. And that's when, you know. but we will on the second. And that's when, you know, we'll do the different appointments here. Second of July.
Sounds good.
Yeah. Uh, what else?
Mayor, if I may?
Yeah.
I, I would like to thank you all for the opportunity to have assisted you in this role. Um, you know, traditionally I've always acted as, uh, you know, special counsel for labor and employment matters and other special litigation matters and so forth. Um, it's, it's kind of been a throwback for me in some sense, uh, having previously served in, in all of your capacities as a, uh, a village trustee and also as a mayor. Um, it, it kind of brought me back to those roles and to the very special work that you all do. And it's been very, very enjoyable and really a privilege and an honor to be able to assist you in that capacity and to, uh, help you through, um, you know, the Daily Herald may want to call it a turbulent time or use some other adjective, but the reality is, um, organizations grow as they move forward. And that's really what's happened with this organization. It's been a privilege to, uh, help, uh, guide you through that process. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Keith.
And I have, uh, one last item here. We have a young lady sitting up here. And who are you?
Lindsay Takaoka, and I'm an intern here. Looks like a lot of-
Are you related to anybody on this board?
Yeah.
Who?
Greg Takaoka.
Is he sitting here now?
Yeah, he's right-
Can you identify him? Okay, well, welcome to Vernon. What are you here, the whole summer?
Yeah.
Now, where do you go to school?
University of Kentucky.
So you're going into your second year or?
Third.
You're gonna be a junior?
Yeah.
Jeez. Okay, that's great. And what do you want to be, an accountant?
Um, I'm studying accounting currently, but I don't really know what I want to do yet.
Is that true, Dad?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, well, it's nice to have you with us, okay?
Thanks.
All right. What else? Uh, nothing, right? Okay, well, yeah, there is. Uh, Trustee Schultz.
Um, I just wanted to, uh, St. Mary Vernon Parish is fifty-five years old, give or take.
Oh, Father John-
And, um, Father John Finnegan, who is the original pastor, uh, passed away, uh, Father's Day. And, uh, there is a wake tomorrow, Friday, the twenty-first, at the church. Uh, and I believe the funeral is on Saturday. But, uh, I just, uh, because St. Mary's is a fairly integral part of this community-
Yep.
I just wanted to, uh, I guess if nothing else, can we have a moment of silent reflection?
Sure.
Can I invite, uh, Chief Kreese to talk about a friend of his who passed away recently that we'd all met in the past?
And thank you, trustee. And, uh, the mayor and I talked about this, uh, last week. Many, uh, people, uh, may recall about two years ago, uh, right on the day almost, uh, when I was sworn as chief of police, I had, uh, a close personal friend of mine, uh, Al Mamphrey, uh, join us, uh, that night. And I was privileged to have him join. Um, and what makes Al special, I call him an army buddy, but, uh, he's one of the original, uh, members of Easy Company, Second Battalion five oh six, Hundred First, uh, Airborne, as featured in the HBO mini-series. Uh, in fact, he was shot, uh, in Operation Market Garden in September forty-four, recovered, uh, went back into action just in time for a little, uh, event called the Battle of the Bulge in Bastogne. Uh, Al, Al came home, uh, raised a family of, uh, three wonderful, uh, uh, girls, uh, who, who, um, uh, are, were, were all successful. Uh, one unfortunately passed, preceded him, and his wife, uh, uh, passed. And unfortunately, Al passed, uh, three weeks ago, about, uh, five days, uh, after he turned ninety-seven. Um, and, uh, he was sharp as attack up until the end. And, uh, I was honored by the family to, uh, be asked to liaison with the Army. And what a lot of people don't understand is they're still in Easy Company, Second Battalion five oh six, Hundred First Airborne. And, uh, this had the attention of the commanding general of the Hundred First Airborne. He green-lighted, uh, seventeen soldiers from that unit to come up and provide, uh, full military honors to, uh, to Al Mamphrey. Uh, so we, uh, we, uh, had services for him last, uh, last week. It was probably the, one of the most, um, meaningful military experiences I've ever had in my life, and it was wonderful. And, uh, uh, we're all happy to, uh, know him. And I appreciate the opportunity to give a shout out. You can, uh, if you're interested, you can look online. Just Google Al Mamphrey and you'll learn all, uh, all about him. So special man. So, thank you.
Okay, uh, let's see. Trustee Takaoka.
Okay, actually I have a couple things. Um, it was brought to my attention from one of the residents. And Mike, you, you got the email concerning, um, Milwaukee Avenue, south of Greg's Parkway, the grass. Who's responsible to, for cutting that? Because it, it looks like it hasn't been cut all year. Who, whose jurisdiction is that?
Uh, that's actually, is that run by the pond and everything? By, in front of?
No, it's on Route twenty-one.
Are you saying-
From Ace Bus Stop, that area?
Yeah, that's actually, is that around the, right at the intersection would be the southwest corner?
The southwest corner, so it's south of Greg's Parkway?
It's an outlot. And what we've been able to figure out is that's Lowe's responsibility.
It's Lowe's.
And our code enforcement officer is reaching out to Lowe's to have them follow up on it.
Okay.
We suspect they have a new manager there and he's not necessarily aware that they're supposed to be mowing it because they've done it successfully in the past.
Right, because it looks like it hasn't been done all year.
Yeah, and for whatever the reason, it hasn't been done this year. So, so we're following up on that.
Okay. And then also in that development Riviera Estates as well, who is, if that undeveloped land, who, is it the landowner, the developer is supposed to cut the lawn next to the residents that are building homes in Riviera Estates?
Yeah, they are. And most of the, uh, up until last year, a majority of the lots were still owned by the Cuneo Trust.
They're supposed to do it.
Those lots have been sold to Icon Builders. Uh, we have a meeting set up with Icon to walk the site tomorrow.
Okay, tomorrow.
Um, they've, and really we just need to be, bring them up to speed with what their responsibilities are. They need to line up a landscaper to mow it a minimum of four times a year. This year might be more, so they can keep it in compliance.
Okay, okay.
Uh, trust-
Oh, one last thing. If-
Present.
Can we, can we discuss an ordinance? Like, if I'm not able to make a meeting, my daughter Lindsay could sit in my seat?
No.
Okay.
Dr. Oppenheim?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I, that was from before.
Oh, how about staff? There's a light on under Ian. Oh, it's your daughter. Did you put your light on?
That was from before also. A mistake, wasn't she?
Damn, okay. Uh, all right, next is, uh, is there a motion to adjourn?
Somebody? Second.
Motion is second. Roll call.
No, voice vote.
Trustee Brown?
All right, well, you know.
An honor-
Aye.
Okay, voice vote, yeah, voice vote. All indicate by saying aye.
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 There any nays? The ayes have it. Motion to adjourn passes.
I got it that time.
Oh, my God.
I missed it the first time I got it.
Okay. All right. All right, next is, uh, I'd like to call the, uh, committee to hold meeting, uh, to order. Uh, first item is approval of committee to hold meeting minutes of June fourth, two thousand nineteen.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion is second. Comments, questions, corrections, deletions? If not, roll call.
Trustee Brown?
Aye.
Trustee Schultz?
Aye.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka?
Aye.
Uh, President Byrne?
Aye. Motion carries.
Okay, request from Brookdale Senior Living for approval of a facade renovation, site plan and landscape revisions at one four five North Milwaukee Avenue. Uh, this is going to be handled by Director Atkinson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Brookdale is, and, uh, they're in the process of putting together a scope of work that would involve, uh, a remodeling of the interior of the structure to, uh, be able to increase their services to memory care, uh, patients. Included as part of this, uh, project, uh, is a, a small addition located on the inside corner of the assisted living wing that would be Building B, uh, that's shown on the site plan in front of you. And that small addition is shown in green, uh, in the rear corner of the building there. Uh, this new two-story addition would be approximately a thousand square feet. Uh, and it will include an expanded dining room on the first floor and a screened porch on the second floor. Uh, the first floor will have access to a new courtyard. Uh, that would be, uh, enclosed by an eight-foot tall wood fence, uh, and that's shown there. Uh, and that gives an area for, so that people with, uh, with memory dis, uh, uh, issues can be in the courtyard and enjoy the outdoor space there. Uh, the exterior construction will consist of an EPIS cladding system. Uh, the walls will be designed to accentuate the existing building, uh, using features such as color and varying wall thickness. You could see how the building, uh, the, the exterior is very complimentary to the, to the wall that's existing now. Uh, windows and, uh, doors, uh, would be aluminum, the color of which would match the existing windows and doors on the building. Uh, so for tonight, if the cow feels the facade renovation, site plan changes, and, uh, landscape changes, uh, are appropriate, then staff should be prepared to, excuse me, uh, staff should be directed to prepare an ordinance, uh, approving those, uh, changes, uh, subject to the conditions that are outlined in your packet. And the petitioner is here to answer any questions.
The EPIS, is that drive it?
Yes, sir.
Is there any reason why we should let them put up drive it?
Uh, well, it's an existing building that has drive it on it.
Not much.
Uh-
Well, I mean, if they figured out how to, you know, prevent mold?
Yeah, I'll let, I'll let you go into the-
Is that all tied into these J channels and the way they're put in?
It is. My name is Mike-
But you got coverage if there's mold?
Yes.
You do?
Mold insurance coverage?
Yeah.
That I would have to refer to the owner.
Yeah, you better. Well, I wish you would, because I know we're not, I don't want to be doing, you know, drive it buildings all over town.
Yeah, no, I agree. And, um, with new buildings, they have to be all brick or stone. With existing buildings, there's more flexibility in the way the ordinance is written. But with, uh, EPIS systems, including a drive it product, it has to be the product that has a drainable system that's installed behind it.
Yeah, okay, well-
It's honeycombs that allow the water to drain behind it and then, uh, and then leave, uh, at the base of the building through weep holes. When drive it was first introduced, they had issues with this because they didn't have drainability between the drive it material and the exterior wall sheathing. Um, uh, and then moisture would be locked into the walls. Uh, and then, uh, this was, uh, especially a problem in coastal regions that are, they have a lot more moisture in the air. Mold was created. Uh, you could see some of the mold growth on the interior of the structure. There was actually a, a, a large settlement that was finally in place. That system isn't approved anymore. That system will never be allowed in Vernon Hills. Uh, what, what will be allowed, uh, is the approved drainage system that's been in place for at least the last fifteen years or so, maybe longer. Um, but I'll let the board, you know, make-
Well, no, I mean, you know, again, I, it's, there are, you know, if it isn't done right, you can have a problem.
Absolutely.
That's all.
Didn't you bring it up then? Can he, can I ask, did you approve the system that is going to cause mold on my house that has EPIS on it in Greg's Landing?
Greg's Landing houses should be, they're okay based on the years.
Just want to make sure.
You're good. Yeah, you're good.
Because it's older than nineteen, older than fifteen years.
Well, you know, you, nobody knows.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
You could, well, the building commissioner could stop by your house.
Yeah, I've got, I have an allergy to mold, so I could just walk around and base it on my reaction.
You're welcome to.
Uh, you should be, you should be fine.
All right.
Would you see any darkness to the outside of the building if there's really mold?
Uh, you could. It manifests mostly on the inside of the building, is my experience.
You cut through the walls, you know?
Yeah. You could have a mold cut, though.
Moving on.
Yeah, moving on.
I've, I'll let the board discuss, but if the board is ready, we're just looking for direction on, uh, uh, to prepare an ordinance, directing staff to prepare an ordinance, approving the elevations, site plan changes and landscape changes.
So made.
Second.
Can I say that?
Motion is second?
Subject to like the six items and then all the-
Yes, thank you.
With the brick? I'm sorry. I, I can't hear you.
Where is the EPIS?
Where is the EPIS? The diaphragm shows off.
No, the EPIS is basically the addition that you're seeing.
Yeah, no, it's, it's, it's EPIS with brick in between. That middle layer is, is concrete and then the rest is EPIS. Is that the?
This is kind of-
My name is Mike Styles. I'm with the Architect DSA out of Nashville, representing Brookdale. Um, so the building as it exists is all brick. Uh, the reason we chose to use EPIS is because we're doing a very minor addition and it's on what we would consider the back of the building.
Yeah.
It's, um, so Milwaukee goes across the front. And I believe if you were to go to the very back of the parking lot of the strip center behind it, you might be able to see our patients.
So you're saying it's-
Uh, so it was, it was mainly, um-
It's cheaper.
Right.
Yes, sir, budget concern. And, but it also, it, it provides your insulation of the wall instead of having to do brick and then continuous insulation and then maybe even cavity insulation above that. So it serves a purpose as well.
Yeah. What are you spending on this?
Our budget was, most of its interior renovations, I believe, were around, is it seven million? Seven, seven and a half?
For this?
Seven million?
No, sir, this is, like I said, the, the considerable portion of this project is interior-
Who's here? Is the owner here?
Yes, sir.
Well, where?
What would the cost difference be between doing EPIS versus doing a Vernon facade?
We have to, it hasn't been priced with brick, so.
Can the owners step up here? Is there one owner here or?
Did you?
We did not price them separately, no.
Today, with your guest in-
Did you consider the brick versus EPIS when you priced out the design?
No, so we had, um, we were instructed to use EPIS from the get-go, by our honor.
Could you state your name for the record, please?
Sure. I'm Lena Burnett. I'm the project manager representing Brookdale Senior Living. I'm an employer of Brookdale.
So you're not the owner?
No, I, um, yeah, just a representative, sir.
That's right.
Yes.
All right, so did, did you price it out as just inquired?
Yes, we, uh, I remember-
We never priced brick as part of this design.
For schematic, I think we did, did. It's an option. Oh, you're right. We didn't, we didn't price it. So I think it provides, uh-
Well, what's the size of this whole addition? A thousand?
The entire thing, the footprint, the footprint is less than five hundred square feet. The addition is nine hundred and seventy square feet total, probably. And that's counting the upstairs portion of the screen porch.
Excuse me, if I may, Your Honor, um, and if, and when you look at the fence, which is, uh, at least eight feet tall, you're not even going to see the first floor of this thing. And your sightline, I mean, this, to see the top part of it, which is mostly a screened opening, you have to get behind the building and you're going to have to really look up.
I'm all right, Dad.
I'm just making a point for the board to, from staff's perspective, the material that's proposed and the design that's before you is appropriate because of the location of the addition and it's staff's recommendation that it be approved.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve.
I made the motion. Someone second?
Including the-
Okay, Craig did.
Including the six points or however many points there are.
Six.
All right, roll call.
President Byrne?
No.
Trustee Brown?
No.
Trustee Schultz? Trustee Markwart?
No.
Well, finish the roll call.
Okay, yeah, just finish the roll call.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka?
Aye.
Okay, tie. No, fails. Yeah, yeah.
At this point, I'd be asking for the board's direction on what we-
Or ask, I guess our direction that said no is to put brick up.
Bring it in.
So, or, or at least price out brick, I guess, to, to, to give the option so we can see, you know, our, is it really that much of a difference in terms of the EPIS and the overall total cost?
Well, you reacted like, whoa, it is.
Well, no, I was, um, maybe our rendering shows more of the facade than you will see from where you can get to, but-
But, was that, that's not really the point, I guess. It's the precedent of using EPIS over brick in the community? Was that the?
We've had an issue here previously with not necessarily mold, but we had an issue at this location. We're very sensitive to this location. You're aware of that, right?
Probably not.
Not, yeah.
Yeah, you are?
Legionnaires' disease in the atrium.
Yeah, you are aware?
No, I'm not aware.
And you're, you're not aware either?
No, sir.
Okay, well, yeah, we had a problem there.
Yeah, we had Legionnaires' disease there. Okay, so that's why you're getting this kind of, anytime that mold or bacteria or anything that's not clean- that's not clean and pure and healthful associated with this facility, we get a little bit of heartburn.
And that's understood.
My heartburn isn't as big as others here, but my present vote is a signal enough that I'm uncomfortable.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, you were present, that's right.
So what, what I'll do is I'll, I think I've heard the board's direction, I'll work with the petitioner, they can come up with a brick veneer option, and then cost for both, and then we can bring that back to the board, and the board can make another determination.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. What else? What do we got, Jimmy's?
No.
Jameson?
No, Jameson.
Well, it could be Jimmy's son.
No, no, no.
It's his son.
No, Javis, okay.
And the son was here.
And you are who, sir?
I'm the owner of Jameson.
You got a name?
Spiro Angelos.
What is it?
Spiro Angelos.
And you, what?
Dave Gonzalez, DXU Architecture.
Peter Vidal, DXU Architecture.
Okay. All right, you got this one, too?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. Jamison's, I think as everyone knows by now, would be located in the building that was formerly occupied by TGA Fridays.
Yeah.
They are not proposing expansion to the facility. They are, but they will be doing a complete interior remodeling, obviously, and then a exterior facade upgrade, and they're also proposing an outdoor patio to the west that's shown on the site plan.
And drive it.
In front of you.
You got, it's drive it, Nate, huh?
Evidently so, sir, yeah. This is what the building is proposed as. The front would include a mixture of stone, brick, and they have existing split face CMUs at the base would be painted, as shown on the screen in front of you. Those same materials would be pulled around to the sides of the structure. A portion of the rear side on the, excuse me, on the east elevation and on the rear south elevation would also have stone. They would retain the EPHIS material that's on that building right now.
Where's it at now, in the back?
Yeah, if you look to, see, the middle picture, lower, the middle two pictures show what the back would look like.
Yeah, so it's a dark color?
Yeah, it is. It would be darker than what the EPHIS is right now.
So you guys wouldn't have to touch that?
No, we have to, we're going to repaint the whole thing.
What are you going to do?
Paint it. Paint the EPHIS.
You need to really speak up, sir, and into the microphone.
The EPHIS is going to get repainted.
Well, repainted, but you don't, are you taking it down?
No.
You're putting it back up?
No.
The work is really concentrated on the front and the two sides of the building.
Yeah.
Going on in the rear as well, they'd be repairing the wooden fence garbage enclosure, painting that to match the existing building as well. The petitioners have been made aware that there'll be a punch list generated regarding the site conditions, they'll have to upgrade for ADA compliance, parking lot will have to be upgraded in accordance with village requirements, and the landscaping, they're not proposing any changes, but they will be made to update the landscaping in accordance with village requirements, which would be compliance with the landscape plan that's in place with it right now. So for tonight, the request is for approval of the facade renovation, and then the site plan changes, which is really the outdoor patio. If the board believes that this request is appropriate, then staff should be directed to prepare an ordinance approving the facade renovation, the site plan changes, all in accordance with the conditions that are outlined in your packet.
Trustee Schultz.
The split face CMU acceptable?
It's exist, it's existing at the base.
It is.
I went out and looked at it, actually, it looks, it looks okay. They're going to paint it gray so it matches the new color palette.
All right.
All right, so then there's what, five conditions, four conditions?
Yes, sir.
Okay, any other comments or questions from the board? Is there a motion to approve?
No, I got a question.
Oh.
I have a question. I know I've been here before, and I've seen you before.
Lifetime.
Lifetime, yes.
I see you every day.
Exactly. In the morning, yes.
I've done, I've done other projects here.
Okay, no, but you're, you're, you're in Arlington Heights, you're the old cattle company, right? Dundee Road?
I, I own all of Jameson's.
Right, that's, but that used to be cattle company, that's the Jamesons, yeah.
That's 25 years.
Yeah, exactly, okay. Oh, I remember cattle company.
But I was in front of you guys about two, three years ago, I did, I did the Chase on, on Front Menards, that's my.
I knew I.
Chase Bank, I did that, you guys, I think, voted on that.
So what are you, what are you, a general contractor?
No, no, no. Owner. I own restaurants and I.
And banks?
And I do real estate development.
Yeah, that's all right.
Hardworking.
It's okay.
This would be the ninth location, is that correct?
Uh, this will be the ninth, Jamie says, we have 15 restaurants here in South Carolina, and we've been in business for 30 years.
And what, Eric Jameson's in South Carolina?
Yes.
Oh, okay. There's a lot of transplants there.
Yeah, that's good.
You got one in Bluffton?
That's where it is.
Bluffton, South Carolina.
That's where my brother just bought a house, you know.
Where, in Del Webb?
He was going to downsize.
Did he go to Del Webb?
No.
Wait, because.
He bought a house.
No, Del Webb.
He bought not Del Webb, he bought it at a Pete died 36-hole country club.
It's golf world down there.
Yeah, well, I don't know, it's, anyway, yeah, he.
It's beautiful.
He downsized, he got a house about 4,200 square feet instead of 3,700, and he hit an instale.
But half of the taxes, though.
He downsized, yeah, 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 crazy. Yeah, I'll tell him, you know, we probably should have, Bobby should have went to Del Webb.
Oh, yeah, they got four, it's great community, and we have restaurants in there, that's why.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Well, I'll tell him I met the guy that owns Jameson's.
I don't know how far they'll get him.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Be glad to answer them.
No, motion two.
So there's a motion to approve, right? And there's a second?
Second.
All right, who's the motion to approve?
Who's second?
Trustee Cook?
I'm moving it.
Who's the second?
Second.
Who?
Mark.
Okay. All right, roll call.
Trustee Takaoka?
Aye.
Trust, or President Byrne?
Aye.
Trustee Brown?
Aye.
Trustee Schultz?
Aye.
Trustee Marquardt?
Aye.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Any idea of one you'd think you'd be.
Thank you.
What, you got a timetable?
November 1st we're shooting for.
And then you got to come in and get your liquor licenses, or?
Yeah, we're, as soon as we got this, that'll be their next step, prior next week.
Are these prime, are these prime states?
We have prime and certified Black Angus.
Yeah, no, I mean, you could not open sooner, as far as I'm concerned, because in, when this was on the agenda, I've had a number of people comment to me, oh, yeah, yeah, I mean, it was unanimous.
Hopefully we'll do well, thank you very much.
All right, welcome to Vernon Hills.
Welcome to Vernon Hills, I'll see you.
All right, what else? Consideration amendment to ordinance 2018-062 regulating the placement of small wireless facilities in the village. Okay.
One more time for the three.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is, this is really just a cleanup. As the board is aware, last year, Illinois passed the Small Wireless Deployment Act. At that time, there was also a pending House bill, HB 1187, that if it, if that amendment to the bill SB 1451, which was the bill that led to the Small Wireless Deployment Act, that would amend the SB 1451 by allowing, that, allowing the board to require approval for those sites located in residential districts. So we passed the ordinance, since that, that would require board approval for small cell sites in residential districts, since that time, HB 1187 died and didn't pass, so really we're just cleaning up our ordinance to be in compliance with state regulations whereby small cell sites located in the rights-of-way of residential districts would be permitted, subject to certain regulations that are provided for by the act. And that's what this, and what I've done is, with the help of the village attorney, we've put together some draft language for your, for your review that would do, just as I described, it would allow them as a permitted use in, in the right of way. Some of the regulations would still be retained. The antenna, if attached to a light pole, can be no more than 10 feet above the pole. The antenna could be no larger than six cubic feet, the equipment could be no larger than 28 cubic feet. We've added some camouflage language in there to make sure that they paint it a color that matches the surroundings, and there's various other requirements, too, that are provided for by the act. We've included in the ordinance, in the text language before you, everything that state statutes would allow us to do. So with that, if the board feels that the draft text language is appropriate, then staff should be directed to put that into an ordinance form, put it back on a future board agenda for formal approval.
So, let me get this straight, so streetlight now is what height?
Twenty-five.
You mean on like my street?
Twenty-four.
Twenty feet, so this is going to add another.
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight?
Twenty-eight.
Okay, so this is going to add another 10 feet on top of it?
Uh, yes, sir.
Wow. I knew we didn't like this in the first place, but, you know.
Yeah, we have, we have a picture you could look at that Mike could put up on the screen for you.
But it's only the antenna that can go that high.
It's the antenna, and the idea is to get it up above the tree line so that.
There it is.
It's out of the sightline for people in their homes and so forth.
So to the left, on this picture, to the left, you see this, this is actually the light that is adjacent to Peterson Park on Hawthorne. To the left, you see how the light fixture looks now, to the right, how it would look with the antenna. On top, it's got a shroud over it, and then the equipment located on the base of the pole. They actually take down the pole, they create a brand-new pole that matches the existing that's structurally capable of supporting the antenna and the equipment.
So with the angle of the light, it really doesn't increase it that much?
No, not really. And, and in all frankness, it is what it is, we're, you know.
It remained, but it's not 10 feet above the top of the pole, then?
Uh, oh, the equipment, I'm sorry, let me be clear, it has, the equipment per state regulations needs to be a minimum of eight feet above grade.
Above grade?
Yeah, exactly. They can be more than eight feet above grade.
What's the size technically of the radio unit box?
Well, it can be no larger than 28 cubic feet. It varies, but per state statutes and our regulations could not be larger than that.
And this is in order to facilitate the 5G rollout, right?
That's correct.
Because 5G needs substantially more coverage.
Yeah, in our area, we have good coverage in our area.
But that's 4G.
Yeah, exactly, and we have coverage, like where you, you get good reception and that kind of thing. But the issue in our area is data capacity. So these small cell sites can communicate with large cell sites, so when, like, say the tower behind the village hall, when it reaches its data capacity, it could, it could communicate with the small cell site and have more capacity to meet demand.
Right, but it's my understanding that this is an absolute necessity for 5G rollout.
Oh, absolutely.
It is, and we really don't have the ability under state law or federal law to deny this in whole. So what we've done is, is drafted the ordinance, and in fact, the next two items on the consent agenda, we've, we've gotten significant concessions from the cell providers to locate these in areas that would be the least obtrusive, to do it in such a way that would be the least obtrusive, et cetera, so that it would, you know, minimally impact residents.
Motion to direct staff to prepare an ordinance amending ordinance 2018-062 as recommended?
Second.
Motion is second. I, a question on, what kind of, you know, signal radiates out of this, this equipment? Is there any?
EMF.
EMFs?
There's a debate about that, but that is one of the areas that the Congress has specifically preempted state and local governments from considering.
Huh.
So, just like you can't look at whether there's EMFs that come out of a regular cell site, similarly, you're preempted from even considering those issues in connection with this.
So there's a class action lawsuit?
No, there's a federal statute that says thou shalt not consider.
Ooh, tort of immunity.
In 25 words.
Congress in their infinite wisdom, let's just leave it at that.
Yeah, okay. All right, well, I made it to 70, so I'm good. Okay, roll call.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka?
Aye.
President Byrne?
Uh, aye.
Trustee Brown?
Aye.
Trustee Schultz?
Aye.
Trustee Marquardt?
Aye.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, so five, obviously, four, five, and six are all tied into this, so.
Is that what, we have people in the audience?
Yeah, Verizon is the first one up, this is the Verizon representative.
Good evening, Jessica DeWalt from Verizon Wireless.
Whoa, 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 whoa. Whoa.
Jessica DeWalt from Verizon Wireless.
DeWalt?
Yes, like the tools.
Okay.
No relation.
All right. Okay, go ahead, you want to talk?
Sure, um, did you want to?
No, right ahead.
Okay, I've been working with your territory representation and with Mike on a master lease agreement for Verizon Wireless. Under that agreement, it basically recites the state statute, we use state statute recurring fees of $200 per year per site that we would put onto village-owned infrastructure and application fee established by state law for each small wireless facility in, on a stage.
Do you know how many square miles Vernon Hills is?
How many square?
Square miles?
No, I don't.
Okay, do you know how many antennas you'd need?
We don't have that number right now, we have our RF team looking at the area, we don't have any number or particular locations that we've chosen yet.
So why do you want to do this? So, why do you wanna do this?
Um, the master lease agreement basically just kind of creates a framework within, within which we would work with you. So, it kind of establishes, uh, insurance, bonds, um, the procedure for which we would apply once we had locations in mind. And then, when we had the exact location, we would apply, um, under that agreement.
So, how many carriers are, are we gonna have? Ten different carriers?
Uh, well, Verizon, AT&amp;T, SAC Wireless Tonight, Sprint, and-
And then you might have third parties, like-
And T-Mobile and SAC are combining, is that correct? Or is that still pending?
I think that's, uh, not in the area now.
Okay, so it could be, it could be Sprint and T-Mobile after Verizon and SAC Wireless, and that's it.
And by, we can't limit any, we, if they wanted to do every-
No, we can't.
Half the light poles in town, they could do it.
Well, there's certain separation, go ahead.
Uh, there, there are separation requirements and separation, uh, standards that we can impose. Uh, basically, what we've done with the two largest cell carriers is we have drafted master license agreements, um, and have complied with not only what the state statute, uh, permits us to do, which is actually very little, and we've, we've gained some additional concessions from those carriers, and we've created this as quote-unquote "the" master license agreement with them so that, uh, if they come back for another location, we already have the agreement in place. And we also have, uh, a model now that we've given to other cell carriers and said, look, this is what it is. This is what everybody else is doing. This is what you need to do as well, and people seem to be falling in line with that as well, so.
Okay, but if, if one goes up, you know, near your house, it's gonna send the five G to how many homes? But do you have, are they just Verizon people?
Well, mine would be just Verizon. The commit, the, the technology doesn't speak with each other, so we use a spectrum that AT&amp;T doesn't use. And we also have, our coverage areas would be different.
So, it'll speak to Verizon people with, uh, you know, with, with the-
The distance, the distance, uh, really varies. Uh, five G is different than four G. The max for a, a small cell is about eight hundred feet.
That covers quite a bit of houses.
Yeah, in a dense, dense area.
Like, like Deer Path, the houses are, you know, sixty-five foot lats, and, you know, they're fifteen feet of separation. I mean, you can put a bunch of houses with eight, eight hundred feet.
Right, they were-
So, it'll, it'll shoot a single, a signal to your equipment in your, stuffed in your bedroom or something.
Right, right. Within that, within that space, yeah. They're really great for dense areas, like, uh, we put them by a lot of metro stops, 'cause they're, uh, metro stops are, you know, high-demand use. A lot of people there.
Are they gonna pump anything over, over to the, the cable wires and in the ground in there? Are they gonna send anything?
They're connected, uh, via fiber back to, uh, the tower.
But there, we, okay. So, but the only way you're getting five G is with one of these antennas on a, on a light pole?
No.
No, um-
Well, go ahead.
That's, that's one of the ways that five G will be, uh, deployed, but, um, I can't really speak to our five G deployment right now.
Okay.
I just don't know.
I'll call my expert, Cashman, he'll fill me in.
There's currently five G available at various points in town here. Yeah.
And it, yeah, it would vary by carrier.
Right, and this just creates more source points.
And Dave, correct me if I'm wrong, are the light poles on, on like my, on Deer Path streets about a hundred and eighty feet apart?
Actually, on Deer Path, they're probably a little-
I'm talking on my, like, a side street.
I think a little bit closer, actually.
Yeah?
Oh, on the side streets. Deer Path, it's closer, probably side streets, yeah. Hundred and eighty, uh, feet average.
Yeah.
And because we have about eight hundred-
So, there aren't that many light poles. Maybe I got three on my street?
Right, and they're not proposing to put them on our ornamentals. It's the taller poles, uh, shoebox-type poles that they're really asking for.
The, the hundred and eighty feet, is that pole to pole on the same side of the street, or based on the hopscotch?
Um, du- direct distance between poles, hundred and eighty feet on average, two hundred feet maximum.
Yeah. But our, our light, okay, the light poles on our, on like my street, how tall is it? It's not twenty-eight feet?
Twenty-eight feet.
Okay, what is it on Deer Path?
Twenty.
Uh, those are ornamental, they're sh- uh, shorter. Those ones are probably in the twenty, twenty, eh, twenty-foot range.
Okay.
But those are ornamental, and they're really looking to put them on the shoebox, similar to the drums.
And we would work with you on location. If one pole in particular was of specific concern, we could go to the next pole down. You know, we would work with you guys, you know, team up.
I'm just curious, is the, you got all these service providers, so these things are gonna be everywhere.
Uh, the technology is becoming ubiquitous, yes.
So, they, they can co-locate on the same pole, is that?
Um, well, because the state act and the FCC order limit the height the small cell pole can be, um, and as you can kind of see there, the, the boxes take up quite a bit of, uh, real estate on that, on the pole, and they have to be a minimum of eight feet off the ground. So, you're really talking about getting a lot in there. Um, also, uh, as, um, Mike mentioned, we're, we're designing and giving you a brand-new pole to carry our weight. So, if you're adding another small cell on it, you're, you're kind of loading that, that pole pretty heavy.
And if, and that pole won't break, break away that easily?
It's designed, it's structurally designed to carry this weight, and it, it matches your current pole design.
Same weight?
It would be, it would be designed to be heavier.
Right.
We require structural calculations and certification that it will not cause impact.
So, somebody hits this thing, the pole might win?
Um, the majority of the ones that we've seen, they are taking our poles down. They're putting a new pole up. It's thicker.
Yeah.
It's like Schedule eighty versus Schedule forty.
Yeah, well, I mean, but if you hit a light pole in town now, it's going down.
They're usually designed to be breakaway.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are these gonna be designed to be breakaway?
Yeah. For safety, usually, yeah, for, for safety concerns, yeah.
Yeah, I would hope so.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, so is it a race now between the carriers to get yours on the, because they're just art?
We don't know.
Is there, I, I know the two of you are here, so, I mean-
Well, where, where Verizon needs to be is not necessarily where AT&amp;T needs to be. I don't know where they need to be. Right now, Verizon's-
It sounds like you need to be everywhere, if it's every eight hundred feet.
They actually asked to be on the agenda ahead of them.
Oh, wow. Did you guys duke it out back there, or what?
Um, no, like I said, different, different providers have different coverage demands. So, we, we didn't necessarily need to be in the same exact locations. I haven't-
But basically, five G requires much more saturation of access points-
Right.
-as opposed to what four G had.
Yes.
You know, it-
By a significant amount.
Yeah, and what Trustee Cook is getting at, and it's just, I'll just, you know, to take his point a little further is that it's, it's basically, we're providing this five, this is helping provide this five G service to our residents and businesses. Without these small cell sites, they don't get that service.
I, I get that. My concern, though, is what if these two companies take all the poles, and then, when the third carrier, Sprint, comes in, which I have, they're not here tonight. Am I out of luck? I don't get five G because they, they took all the-
It's, uh, it's under the state act, the, um, municipalities have to treat us nondiscriminatory, so you can't form an exclusive agreement with one provider or the next. Whoever, uh, has a, a complete application for that pole first has dibs on that pole, basically.
Wow. Is that ubiquitous?
If you go, uh, for example, in, uh, The Loop-
Huh?
If you go, for example, downtown Chicago, The Loop, almost every corner, you're gonna see one.
And you're not being dismissive to us?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
That's why, that's why we're here.
Yeah, well, okay, great.
You know, and I'll remind you-
We're not go, I mean, you know, this is, you know, out of our hands at a higher level here, which is, concerns me.
We're making the best out of a adequate deal, or whatever. Not a bad deal.
And to answer Dr. Oppenheim's initial concern.
We're getting a couple of bucks here, right? You blew past that two hundred bucks. Where's the two hundred bucks?
So, two hundred dollars, uh, per-
A month?
A year.
A year.
Um, is, basically, it's a rent per pole.
Yes, but you made some comment like it was going to a fund, or-
It would go to you, to the village. If it's a village-owned pole, you would collect-
Who establishes the amount?
The state statute.
The legislature limited the amount we can charge.
Oh, we gotta work that.
Or it would've been much higher, I'm just saying.
Yeah, come on, they're gonna make more of a fortune off of these things.
So, there's no way to even reserve a certain number of poles for other carriers, just to make sure that there's adequate coverage?
A- a- as a practical matter, you look at the number of poles and you look at where they need to go. If you did eight-hundred-foot circles from where they were to, to get their coverage area, there would be enough other poles within there that would serve the other carriers, 'cause there aren't that many at this point. But to answer your point, yeah, what the cell carriers are doing is exactly the same as what they did back when they were creating the large cell sites, which is, they each wanna have their own so that potentially they could have somebody else rent from them to co-locate on their pole.
But at least they could co-locate, so then you can limit the number of towers.
Somebody can co-locate on their pole, and they'd be happy to accept rent from them.
No, I thought you said they couldn't.
That's the-
I don't know.
Not on these poles.
I haven't seen that happen yet. Um, and we have been working with Lake County as well.
Dave, switch carriers.
Just switch, Dave.
Just switch carriers, okay? Your, your carriers are not coming.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We'll have to talk deals later.
Oh, these things, oh, yeah. All right, okay, we're at number-
Four and five.
We're at five. There's a motion and a second. For Verizon.
Correct.
Yes, I have Verizon.
Okay.
I don't.
Roll call.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka?
Aye.
President Byrne?
No.
Trustee Brown?
Aye.
Trustee Schultz?
Aye.
Trustee Markward?
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, next, AT&amp;T.
I want a vote.
It'll come back, it's on the board. I don't know. Okay, what do you, I mean, what, what's your, we don't even need him to talk.
It's, uh, it's, you know.
Is there anything he'd like to correct her on?
Yeah, come on.
Why should we go to AT&amp;T? I have my team.
Well, I got it too, but that doesn't mean I can't switch.
I have something to ask.
Sure.
On, uh, because of, uh, having five G, I'm told on some of the phone systems, due to the fact of from police or, uh, public works, the, i- in case of, uh, I use the example of, uh, of, uh, the Boston Marathon bomb. Uh, they canceled out the calls because they thought they were being done by tra, uh, by transmitting through the phones. And I was running, and, well, I finished by that time, but I, uh, my daughter was trying to get hold of me. A few calls go through. What they're saying with some of these with municipalities or police and so, this system will automatically be able to go through on and above other phone systems with, uh, five G. Is that correct or incorrect, or?
Uh, in, in theory, yes, that's correct. So, the point of the small cell is to increase the capacity of the existing network. Um, so, as was previously discussed, uh, networks currently are built off of macro towers that have a limited coverage and capacity area. Um, so, what AT&amp;T and Verizon's trying to do with small cell is two things. One, um, increase that, uh, capacity, right? So, the more small cells you have, the more network capacity you have, so the more, um, different people can, can use that network. Um, and the second one is increasing coverage. So, you're gonna have areas where there's gonna be gap in coverage due to locations of towers. Um, so, AT&amp;T, um, RF engineers, they look at the network as a whole and say, I need to increase my capacity over here, or I have a, uh, coverage gap over here. And what small cell's trying to do then is fill those gaps and increase that capacity. Um, so, kind of in the example that you mentioned, um, this small cell deployment will, um, increase that capacity. So, events like that are, um, kind of what was discussed earlier with your guys' water, um, issue, um, is gonna have that capacity to reach everyone that's on that, on that network.
I guess, a question I've got is, okay, we've got this giant tower. I know you're on it. I'm assuming you're on it too, uh, right out here in our backyard. Um, will you need the small cell towers within Hawthorne Club, or?
Sure.
You will?
Uh, I can't, like, comment for sure, I'm not an RF engineer, but we currently do not have any nodes planned kind of right around this area, uh, which typically means that this tower should be providing enough coverage and capacity to cover, um, AT&amp;T's customers that are kind of in, uh, in this neighborhood.
Okay, so, you probably won't need a whole lot of, uh, small cell towers basically right here, or basically in your backyard, yeah, because you've got-
Police station.
Right.
Sure, and kind of as was previously mentioned, um, they're, they're limited areas, right? So, um, currently, AT&amp;T has two locations proposed, um, in Vernon Hills, and then additionally, we're not only gonna be citing on, on two Vernon Hills-owned pools, we're also citing on ComEd-owned assets, other assets such as those.
Well, it's basically to accommodate more bandwidth for the, the new download speeds for the higher stuff that's coming out, and, I mean, it's like the difference between if you got a, an old ten-eighty TV in your house, you're not gonna be able to watch four K UHD. You gotta go get a four K UHD TV to watch it. And, and this is the faster, faster streaming.
Yeah.
Um, everything is, is faster, bigger, and that's why it needs-
But your cell phone'll still work.
Oh, yeah, but it, but your cell phone won't get, in other words, somebody who has a five G, five G phone who's near one of these towers will download something much faster than you will. And, and with everybody streaming now, that's the, the reason for this.
You've got the ones on across from the school, right?